Well, it's me, Nora. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation followed.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the like of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Alan.
Here.
Green.
LaFleur.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Reindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Motion to excuse Counselor Green for being out of town would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? Be ye not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to approval of minutes for the City Council meeting of January 6th. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion approve.
Support.
It's been made and supported. Any discussion on those minutes? Be ye not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. Move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. We will ask you to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and if you're here for something that's on the agenda, we definitely will call for you at that time. Mr. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
City Council, any changes?
Nope.
A motion to adopt the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Be ye not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have one public hearing this evening and three items for consideration. The first one is the public hearing for the fiscal year 2020-21 Community Development Block Grant Funds. Do we have a motion to go into open public hearing?
I make motion to open the public hearing for the use of the fiscal year 2020-21 CDBG Funds at 7:05.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion on this? Be ye not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We are in open public hearing. Mr. City Manager?
Counsel is scheduled to hold this public hearing for the use of the 2020-2021 Community Development Block Grant allocation. The CDBG allocation is derived by a method from the Housing and Urban Development Department that takes into consideration such factors as population, poverty, and overcrowding. The allocation method for CDBG funds has once again been tweaked by HUD and thus passed on to Macomb County. New this year is that all bricks and mortar projects are considered using a competitive method where all municipalities applying for projects will apply from a larger pool. This method benefits, as well as detracts. The benefit is that we can apply for a project up to $150,000. The downside is we may not receive funding depending on the how competitive the nature is. Again, and to say exactly how this will play out over the next couple of years, we just don't know. The Federal Aid Committee certainly sometimes with us applying for smaller projects than some of the larger communities, we often get our smaller projects approved. We'll just have to wait and see on some of these. So, we do get roughly the same amount of public service program dollars that we got last year that go to like either the senior coordinator or many of the Health and Human Services organizations that may present tonight. But the community development projects, whereas the bricks and mortar, we will be applying for against all the other communities in the county.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to address counsel on the use of the CDBG funds? Now would be the time. Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Amanda Dodd. I'm the Operations and Events Coordinator for CareHouse. We are located at 131 Market Street, and I also have some information to pass out to you.
We can hand it down if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
CareHouse is the Macomb County Child Advocacy Center with our main office located in Mount Clemens and a satellite office located in Warren. Our services are focused on child victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, or children who have witnessed a violent act as well as their non-offending family members. Our goal is to minimize trauma for child victims of abuse and to help the child victim and non-offending family members through the investigation and prosecution phases and provide support to begin the healing process. CareHouse is one of 34 accredited child advocacy centers, or CACs, in Michigan, serving over 53 counties and one of over 800 in the United States. We collaborate with all law enforcement jurisdictions in Macomb County as well as the FBI, Homeland Security, and Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, Children Protective Services, the Macomb County Prosecutor's Office, medical and mental health professionals, other child welfare agencies as determined by the case. I know how difficult it can be to talk about child sexual abuse. Unfortunately, that is a big part of the problem. We cannot wish away child sexual abuse or pretend that it doesn't exist. The truth is that at least one in 10 children will become victims of sexual abuse before they turn 18. More kids suffer from sexual abuse than from asthma or autism combined. That means that almost three kids in every classroom in Michigan and over 20,000 of all the children in Macomb County today are living with the trauma of sexual abuse. These numbers are surely much higher than our best estimates because most children never tell. Sadly, living with sexual abuse is a reality for children of every race, gender, and economic status. These children could be your kids, your neighbor's kids, your kid's friends. One can even be you or me. Over 90% of children victims know their abuser. Those who molest children look and act just like everyone else. Abusers can be neighbors, friends, coaches, teachers, clergy, parents, or family members. They can be adults or children. They can be men or women. Kids come to CareHouse from every community in Macomb County, and we spared the trauma of multiple interviews. After the forensic interview, CareHouse also offers follow-up support services for child victims and their parents, interviewing to promote healing and helping families to cope with emotional stress and trauma that is caused not only by the acts of abuse but also the investigative process. These services include crisis counseling, child safety assessments, access to forensic medical examinations, parent and child support groups, trauma-focused therapy sessions, family advocacy, referrals to other needed community services. As a designated counsel in Macomb County for the Michigan Children's Trust Fund, CareHouse also offers child abuse prevention information, education, and training for the professionals in the community at large. Families are never charged for our services. They receive at CareHouse, and we provide services to all referred children and their non-offending family members. I am also proud to report that according to our most recent independent financial audit, 80 cents of every dollar that comes into CareHouse is specifically devoted to serving children and families in our community. Since our opening in 1996, we have conducted over 7,900 child forensic interviews with 44 of those children residing in the city of Richmond. In 2018, we provided 753 forensic interviews. One of those children resides in the city of Richmond. In 2019, we provided 757 forensic interviews. Three of those children reside in the city of Richmond. We received $600 in CDBG funding from the city of Richmond for 2019 to 2020, which helps support services to one family. We depend on support from the community to provide a voice for child victims and a safe place for them to be heard. We are very grateful to have the city of Richmond as an invested partner. We respectfully request your consideration for funding this year in the amount of $600, which will support services for one city of Richmond, child victim, and their family. For more information about CareHouse, you may visit our website at www.mccarehouse.org and follow us on Facebook. Thank you for your time and consideration. Are there any questions regarding CareHouse?
Does Counsel have any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me address you today. My name is Scott Andrews. I am the Client Services Coordinator for Interfaith Volunteer Caregivers. Our organization is a nonprofit charity that has been around for 27 years that's providing basic assistance to hundreds of frail, older, and physically challenged adults, hopefully helping them remain safely in their own homes. Our organization carefully screens, trains, and finds caring volunteers to provide services at no cost to these seniors or disabled adults that we are helping. Our activities as an organization primarily encompass providing free transportation, minor chores, home repairs, visiting lonely, homebound people, and even respite breaks. Year by year, we are finding tracking close to 20,000 or more hours of volunteer service on a yearly basis, and year in and year out are helping usually in the range of about 500 clients, 500 seniors or disabled adults. I come before us today making a small CDBG chore request, and the chores component on the first sheet I think I gave you sort of lists out all the various things that we do. It again is minor home repairs. It may be changing screens, cleaning out gutters, literally changing batteries and carbon monoxide detectors, doing the raking of leaves. Occasionally, you'll find that someone will have a large tree branch come down where various cities possibly may have fines for them, and these are seniors who are physically unable to take care of it themselves. So, in this particular program that we've been applying for CDBG funding, it is encompassing of chores, repairs, housekeeping, and basic maintenance. As you can see in one of the first forms I gave, we have two active volunteers in the city of Richmond, but we have not had any requests from any low-income or poverty-level sort of seniors in your town, sorry, in your city, and we are looking to expand our program. Having been primarily serving Macomb County for the whole 27 years and then recently adding parts of southeast Oakland County, we've certainly been servicing many, many clients in southern Macomb and been trying to expand up to other towns. We're hoping that you look at the program favorably. I will be very frank from, we'll call it the vision and philosophy of our executive director. One of the reasons why I'm here beyond an actual formal request of $168 is in hoping to expand this program and utilize the hundreds of volunteers we have to help people in their homes. It is simply having a public forum like this to share with you sort of what we do, and quite honestly, in your capacity as a council member, in your capacity as a citizen of the city, if you happen to know of anyone who would be a low-income sort of senior that is lacking other resources and they need help with a small item, a chore, we occasionally will find they need rides to a doctor visit that is out of district and Smart Bus won't cover them, and for them to pay for an Uber would be beyond their reach. So, just anything that, any information that you can garner from what I passed out or just knowing that there is a 20-plus-year volunteer program trying to help seniors is great even beyond the, I guess, formal request for $168 in hopes that we can have our program come out here to Richmond and find some people could use some help at home. So, I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a great service. It's one that we evidently haven't tapped onto in our community. I mean, what's the likelihood of somebody was to call tomorrow and said, "Hey, I've got some bulbs that need to be changed in, you know, my ceiling, you know, I have to meet a certain criteria on income level"? Is that how this works?
So, we, we will find volunteers to help people who seem to need help through a long questionnaire. For the actual CDBG chore requests, I guess the things we're getting, we're asking for funding for, my understanding, I want to make sure, is it has to be based on income level, so they have to meet the federal and then now it's the state income level of number persons in the household, household income, that is either low-level income or poverty. The fact is, here'd be an example. Let's say a family, household has a decent amount, a good amount of income beyond low level, and the primary caregiver maybe for the senior are two children who might be out of town for a week and something, let's say leaky faucet, springs up. We may still find a volunteer to help them even though there's no way to utilize CDBG funds because they didn't meet that income threshold.
Okay, okay. Has, through the census, have we identified a number of people in our community that meet that criteria?
If we do not, we have one census tract in the city that is considered moderate income, but that is the furthest down they goes by census tract block, and that includes like an entire block. So, it goes by aggregate income. So, we don't know if there are
Individuals?
Individuals who are in need. The one census tract block that we have that is considered moderate income is the block between Seymour and Mary, south of Dow.
Okay, okay.
Mayor, what I just remembered, and I'm, Client Services, I'm, A, newer to the organization, and I do the intake of people looking for help to see what level of help and what other resources could be the area agency on aging, Smart Buses, what other resources they could possibly utilize. My understanding is for any submission of us utilizing CDBG monies allocated from a city that they have to have a signed and approved affidavit that refers to household income from like the county. It is a, it is paperwork beyond my scope, but it is a real affidavit as opposed to me on the phone asking, "Well, roughly what is your gross income"? We're going to provide help no matter what, but the CDBG monies wouldn't go, I guess, reimbursement unless they met countywide, which then is statewide, which then is federal of like income levels. So...
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions?
I just have a question on the volunteers themselves.
Yes, sir.
Is it strictly 100% volunteer?
I mean, we have staff, but yes, the people that go to your house that would help sort of this, this home program are volunteers. There are volunteers that are, we're not, we're not finding volunteers off the internets. They are volunteers that we meet by talking to Kiwanis and councils and congregations, being an interfaith group, and they are interviewed, sat down. We make them sit through a couple of hour orientation, and we actually do quality assurance with the clients that are helping. How was your visit? How was your experience? How was this volunteer? And I've been told in the 27 years of the organization, other than a one missing screwdriver, that we're not quite sure who has it. We haven't had to tap into liability insurance or, or had a problem with any of the volunteers. But yes, they are all volunteers that go into the households. And oftentimes, they're retired seniors themselves who are able, able to assist. Neighbors helping neighbors.
Okay, anything else? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anne Bychago. I'm the Chief Program Officer for Domestic Violence Services at Turning Point. Turning Point is Macomb County's only domestic violence and sexual assault support organization. We are celebrating our 40th year this year in 2020. We offer a comprehensive array of services including, excuse me, a 24/7, 365-day-a-year hotline, an emergency shelter, home-based community advocacy for residents who leave shelter as they establish their independence. We offer individual and group counseling. We offer assistance with filing personal protection orders. We have an office down at the Circuit Court Building downtown Mount Clemens. This year, the state of Michigan has asked Macomb County to pilot a program where all personal protection order filing is done electronically, and some of the folks, probably 80% of the folks that we see, come in, don't even have an email address set up. They don't have access to internet. So, we're assisting 93% of all the people in Macomb County who file a personal protection order come through our office. We also have legal advocacy. We offer forensic nurse exams for survivors of sexual assault, and we provide community education and prevention to schools in Macomb County. In the past fiscal year, 26 shelter bed nights were provided for one Richmond resident fleeing domestic violence in her home. During those bed nights, it cost Turning Point approximately $1,800 to provide shelter, basic needs, meals, crisis intervention, case management, childcare, program advocacy, and support groups for that survivor. Turning Point also provided the following additional services to Richmond residents. Two survivors received help at that PPO office that I talked about. Eight survivors received counseling and advocacy. One survivor received legal advocacy assistance. Three women received crisis intervention advocacy and forensic nurse exams following sexual assault, and three Richmond residents received assistance through our 24-hour hotline. We respectfully request $1,500 from the city of Richmond this year. We'll be able to provide approximately 60 nights of shelter for a survivor at $25 per night. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about Turning Point.
Counsel, any questions?
I just have a question too. It's a great, great service that's offered. Does, does it make a difference when we talk about the city of Richmond on how much of our CBDG funds that we give, gives us, is it earmarked for Richmond or is it all one pool based on need?
Right. It goes into our pool of money that we use specifically for the shelter, and so that's why I talk about bed nights.
Thank you.
I don't know if you have any older statistics for the city of Richmond, but it sounds to me as though we're seeing more use based on what you have told us now, which comes as a surprise, I guess, or, you know, I guess that's a reflection of society too. But in the past, I don't think we've had that much use by the city of Richmond according to our police department.
Right.
So, it's definitely increased.
I think part of that too is we've always been the best kept secret in Macomb County.
Yeah.
I mean, truly, when, years ago, when I would say Turning Point, people would be like, "Whoa, what's that"? And still, now, 25 years later, what's Turning Point? Really? You don't know what that is. So, I think we are a really well-kept secret.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other comments by the city council at this point? A motion to close would be in order.
I make motion to close the public hearing for the use of the fiscal year 2020-2021 CDBG funds at 7:27.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. We are out of the public hearing. We move on to items for consideration, the first one being consideration of fiscal year 2020-21 CDBG fund allocations. Mr. City Manager, any comments?
Just as we've discussed, the CDBG funds come to us through Macomb County, so all of these presenters that have made a spoke tonight at the public hearing are allocated and approved for the city of Richmond. We, under summary of previous council action, gave you a breakdown of who we gave money to and what amount last year. Again, we're the cities requesting for, for up to $4,867 for the senior coordinator position. Obviously, whatever council gives to the, to the groups here tonight, we would just subtract from that amount.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, one more thing. And then, under the, even though we don't have a guarantee, motion number one, or I'm sorry, motion number three is to apply for $6,764 within the competitive area to furnish door openers at the Senior Center. We approved this last year for this building. Actually, the bids, I believe, are due tomorrow on that, and so this spring we'll be putting them at this building to assist people in need here. We hope that through the competitive process, we'd receive funds for that next year. So, that's motion number three.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Counsel, would you please address motion number three so we can get that out of the way?
I make motion to apply for $6,764 for the fiscal year 2020-21 CDBG fund, competitive funding to furnish one Stanley Magic Touch Automatic Door Opener at the Richmond Senior Center located at 36-164 Festival Drive.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Now, it's counsel's pleasure on motion one or motion two. And motion one, of course, has been written out. City Manager, explain the $4,867 that we've been allocated for those type of services. If it's motion two, then the motion should include to who and how much money. Is anybody ready to make that motion? I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick my neck out here, I guess. We're gonna, I like what I heard tonight. I didn't like the fact that, what I heard from Turning Point, that we have more people using it than we ever have. I know that's a, that's a great thing. So, I'm gonna go with, my motion would be to allocate the 2020-21 CDBG funding to the following public service programs. The first one would be Turning Point in the amount of $1,500. CareHouse in the amount of $600, and the Interfaith Volunteer Caregivers in the amount of $168, and the remaining balance would go towards our senior services coordinator position.
I believe that would be $2,599.
$2,500 and what, John?
$99.
$99.
Somebody else wants to quick check my math, but...
Yeah, I was scratching, I couldn't...
I, I base that on the max funding for the three groups.
Okay, okay.
I'll support that.
Thank you, Rob. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I fully support this motion. I know we all had some idea of how we wanted to split this up, but I want to thank you for your leadership on giving us the right direction.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for those coming out tonight, enlightening us. That's very appreciative of that.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your services that you provide to our community.
I think we need to make it, you know, I don't know that we've ever donated before through the CDBG to interfaith volunteer caregivers, but I liked your presentation. It definitely needs to get up this way. We've had problems in the past trying to allocate CDBG funds because we don't meet some of the criterias. We don't, as our planner talked about, we don't really meet that criteria in this community, which is a good thing, I guess, but we do have people in need. And so, it's something, I think for $168, we can... And so it's something, I think, for $168 we can make available to, you know, hopefully somehow, John, you guys can work with that.
And I was kind of thinking, looking at, as he mentioned, we have two volunteers in the community and sometimes it's just a matter of putting that volunteer with somebody in need. I have all the cards and contact information that everyone dropped off tonight. Our cable coordinators always looking for additional Focus Richmond segments. It'd be a good way, because you could share those segments easily on Facebook, to get the word out on some of the programs that are available in town that may otherwise, we, we put their information in a rack that people spin around and take what they want. But if they'd be willing to do a short, you know, interview on our local access channel, it might get that out further.
That would be great.
So we'll take a look at that.
And I don't want to leave off Carehouse. I mean, it goes on spoken, you guys do a great job and we have utilized you and our police department has indicated to us that, thank God, you know, that you're here also, you know. And again, I'll echo the councilman, thank you for being here tonight. You know, other than Carehouse, we know what they do, but we didn't know what was going on with Turning Point and how much, how badly it's needed in our community. And we had no idea what interfaith because you told us what it was and then, and we, that's what we need. That we represent the people of the city of Richmond and I'm sure they sit right with us and when they watch this, they'll see it. You had three great presentations and it's needed in our community. Our community continues to grow and, you know, our, our age continues to grow also. And I read in one of your, one of your brochures, something about 90%. Yeah, the number of seniors in Macomb County is expected to increase by more than 90%. And that tells it right there. We've talked about this in our Parks and Recreation, that we need to start working towards some elderly-type events for, you know, to keep people busy like myself. You know, you, you reach that point, you don't want to just sit and watch TV there, you know, you're not done. You're, and this generation is, wants to do things. So, you know, we are addressing some of that in discussions that we've been having in our workshops. So this was perfect, this really was, and I think it's best for our, our people in our community, you know, offer, offer a little bit more. Troy?
Just for your motion, since we're going with number two, we'll add Richmond Senior Center Senior Coordinator in the amount of $2,599 as the fourth
Yeah.
item that we'll donate to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Got that, Karen. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on the subject? Okay, and I have to come back to you guys. Any comment? If not, it's back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Again, thank you for being here. Okay. Item number two is consideration of Michigan Junk Teaks Mobile Food Vendors. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to consider mobile food vendors requested for the vintage markets on April 25th and July 25th. This is the Junk in the Trunk and the Richmond Rubbage and Relic Events that have been approved in the past. At the last council meeting, council approved the special events. However, had held off on approving the mobile food vendors until there could be discussion tonight, which was held previous to the council meeting at the roundtable meeting that was open to the public at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow Michigan Junk Teaks to have mobile food vendors in conjunction with their markets on April 25th and July 25th with the 10, 10 conditions provided.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion? As the city manager has stated, the city council met in our workshop setting, which was open to the public and had been announced at the last meeting. And we said that we would discuss this item and hopefully be ready to give an expedited answer to the petitioner for the vendor, food vendor, mobile trucks. And there was about an hour's worth of discussion on this again, which the council has already addressed that this at other workshops and other council meetings to no end. So they, this has been brought up today and I think it's, if you're going to have food, mobile food vendors, I think it's a good start. The council is addressing two dates. The council needs to address and will continue after this meeting to address an ordinance or an addition to an ordinance for the future for the food trucks in, in the city of Richmond. So with that, any other discussion? No? Any audience participation on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? One nay. Motion does pass. And we will be moving that on to Kathy as soon as possible to let her know. Okeydoke. Item number three is consideration Richmond Girls Fast Pitch Association banner request. Mr. City Manager?
The RGFA had requested that they put up their banner again from February 3rd to February 8th, 2020. They have a registration that begins back in November. So I believe they, they put up their banner, I think, from November 3rd through November 9th for their original push for registrant, registration. And now we're just kind of following up on that.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event application for RGFA to have a cross-the-road banner in conjunction with the registration event to be displayed February 3rd, 2020 through February 8th, 2020.
Support.
What's been made and supported, any discussion on this? We have no audience. I will not any longer be going to the audience. Back to the table, any other discussions? All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Okay, we move on to miscellaneous matters from the city manager, sir.
The DPW will be doing the downtown cleanups beginning tonight and then continuing tomorrow night. And then today, they also were able to get over to the park and start working on the ice rink. And so for the next couple of days, we have some good weather here conducive to the ice rink. So we're trying to get that going so that we have, it's been a difficult winter for that.
They can make pools themselves on the winter, good old winter days?
Yes, yes, yes. No, it's, it's, it's been a rough winter for our ice rink. It's not conducive.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, we go on to council comments, Dennis? Emily?
Nothing, thank you.
Also?
Michael?
No, also.
Okay, I'm going to go right to the items that we have here. We have, that will be, again, Richmond Police Officers Association Spring Fling. It's going to be held on Saturday, March 7th, but you should get your tables now. Tickets are $35 per person and they went on sale on November 1st. So the, you want to call, I, yeah, it's Richmond Flower Shop at 727-1011. We'll take care of your tickets for you. So if you want to get in on that, I would suggest you get in early. Hall walking continues to happen every Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Held in the Richmond Middle School is put on by our Richmond Recreation Department. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 6 to 8 p.m. As long as there is school, it is open for drop-in, walking through the halls and must be 10 years or older. The big event that's coming up is the Good Old Winter Days. That will be held on one day, Saturday, February 1st at BB Street Park. And there is kids' snowmobile drag races. And as mentioned, the, the Richmond Volunteer Fire Department will be playing hockey against the DPW. And I think there might be one other team. I think there's three teams that gets involved in that, I was told. I think Preston, or, no. Somebody said there was a third team that might
No.
No?
I, I know last year
So that's the broom hockey? Broom hockey must be the three teams. So there's broom hockey also right after the ice hockey. And the Parks and Rec Chili Cook-Off will be from 11 to 1:30. The Historic Village will be open from 11 to 2. There'll be a, a new event is the Ice Carving from 11 to 1:30 in front of the Senior Center. 1:30 is a outdoor cornhole tournament and the broom ball tournament, both at 1:30. And then one that was just added is the, at 6 o'clock inside the Senior Center is the Richmond Wrestling Alumni Association will be holding a UKR tournament. And then all day long, there'll be the beverage tent, beer tent, warming tent will be open right there at the Senior Center area. The Hamlin Pub will be serving food and refreshments throughout the day. If we have snow, we will have the sledding hill again right there on site. And of course, it's all free parking, ice skating. If, as the city manager said, it's, it's nice and ready for us to be on it. That will be open all day and then the, as we mentioned, the Ice Carving. The, what I want to say, the Ice Carvings themselves will be around the area of the Senior Center.
Correct, in addition to the large ice carving that they'll be working on from 11 to 1:30, they will be bringing out approximately 10 other ice carvings and placing them around Festival Drive and the venue.
Yeah. If, if you have any questions on any registration or the events themselves, richmondgoodolddaysfestival.org or you could call the Parks and Recreation at 727-3064 for more information, especially the Chili Cook-Off from 11 to 1:30 that day. It's going to be a lot of fun. And that's it for that announcements. Today being the 20th of January, we have a TIFMA meeting at 7 o'clock on this Wednesday, the 22nd, right here. And it takes us through to February 1st, which is a Saturday, which we just got done talking about as far as the Winter Fest goes and the Chili Cook-Off. And two weeks from tonight, February 3rd will be the next regular city council meeting. And also that's when it opens up a non-resident registration for the pavilion and/or the gazebo. You would go to the Parks and Recreation Department on Festival Drive in BB Park and sign up for that. If you're a city resident, you, you, now is your time before, because it books up. Though every weekend will book up very, very quickly here. So I would, we would hope that you would be able to get in there very soon if you would like to utilize BB Park. I believe that's it. We will be, as mentioned, we will be going after we adjourn this meeting back into our workshop setting. Any other business of the city council this evening? Being not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
What's been made is supported, there's no discussion. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We thank everybody for being with us tonight.